Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee meeting of Wednesday, February 27, 2019. Can you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is approval of the minutes from our February 13 meeting. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Maura, seconded by Teresa. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained. Motion carries forward to nothing with no extension. Thank you. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Committee, we do have warrants to sign this evening. We have two payroll warrants, one in the amount of $1,463,951.74, another for $99,982.91. We have two buildings and grounds warrants, one in the amount of $60,433.01, and one for $31,099.96. Food services warrant in the amount of $906.15. Three accounts payable warrants, one for $467,872.77, another for $267,742.58, and another for $18,179.98, for a grand total of $2,410,169.10. So ask the committee to sign at your convenience. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public forum. At this time, we invite members of the public to come before us to speak about things under the purview of the school committee. Is there anyone here who would like to address us for a public forum? Seeing none, I will declare public forum closed. Thank you. All right. So, Dr. Thompson, do we have any announcements this evening?
Just one. I'm going to reiterate that tomorrow morning, due to the impending snowstorm, we're going to have a two-hour delay. That means there'll be no morning, no AM preschool. The full-time preschool will be delayed by two hours. That will start at 10:30, and there will be no morning extended day. So I just wanted to make sure everybody got that message. It did go out at about 5:30, and I quickly realized and kind of forgot that the television stations, I guess, start running those as soon as they get them. So there was some confusion because I delayed the call for a good time for people to listen to it. But anyhow, that's the update.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. So the next item on the agenda is budget. We do have one budget transfer request this evening for FY '19. Ms. Alice, do you want to tell us about this?
It's from the middle school, Dr. Frazek. It's for additional funds to help pay for her Renaissance learning pilot program. And it's from P code 653, which is their conferences line, and it's going into their instructional supply line of 931.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this budget transfer? Thank you, Dave, seconded by Maura. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. I will ask the committee to sign this. The next...
I was just going to add, you know, for the committee's knowledge, that's part of that assessment and intervention software pilot, the middle school is doing this here, hoping that we will have the funds via the override to implement that. It's, I believe, the second of three programs they're looking at and trying out. So I just wanted to make sure the committee was aware of that.
Okay. So then, the next item, I believe that's it for FY '19, correct? Yes. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the FY '20 budget. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the budget if the override passes, but I just wanted to kind of review where we're at right now with the FY '20 budget. We've been working on it for a while. At this point, we are about $950,000 away from balancing our budget. At the last meeting, Michelle asked a good question of, you know, why can't we ask the town for more money? And we certainly are asking the town for more money. The Budget Balancing Committee will be meeting one week from tonight. I'm hoping at that point that we can get some relief for that, towards that $950,000 that's still remaining. But I did want to clarify my statement on the free cash and things like that. There is roughly $1.6 million in free cash that was certified last year. Typically, we use, you know, a fair amount of money every year for snow and ice and things like that to balance, to finish out the current fiscal year. So I expect that there will be requests against that, 1.6 million for snow and ice. So it's possible that there will be a little over a million left after that. I don't, I'm guessing, you know, it's still February, end of February, but still February. We don't know, you know, like what we'll have in the way of snowstorms. But the, we also have tried to not spend free cash down to zero because that puts us in a very difficult position, and free cash won't be certified again until the fall. So we, if we wanted to ask for relief to resolve our $2.4 million problem, we would need to have, that money couldn't all come from free cash. It would have to come from other departments that are already funded. So, you know, police, fire, general government, DPW, those departments. There just isn't enough, unless it is possible to, I guess it's theoretically possible to dip into the stabilization account, but I don't know the mechanics of that, and I know it has not been, it wouldn't be recommended by bond agencies and things like that for, to dip into stabilization for this sort of situation. So, but we absolutely are hoping that we will get some more money and that that will help us solve some of the $950,000 problem that is remaining, but I don't expect that it will allow us to reverse any of the cuts that we've already made. Michelle?
So I'm glad to hear that, Maya. It kind of confirms what I had to say two weeks ago at our last meeting, in which I got some nasty emails about my inabilities, I guess, let's call it that. And so I'm glad that you brought it back up again. And I firmly believe that this town comes together when it needs to come together. And I think we need to stay strong and say, we don't have the money, we need help.
Oh, absolutely.
And if there is money in stabilization, and again, I said it carefully the last time because I had been told you've got to be careful of bonding issues, and I know nothing about that stuff. But if it's possible, it reminds me of when we did the Chromebooks, and we cautiously went to Capital Outlake, and we asked for half of it, and we got all of it.
Right.
And that was incredible. So it reminds me of, you know, when we need to come together, this town comes together. It always has, I believe it always will. So, you know, I think we should just keep pushing and keep asking, we don't have the money, help us. Help us, and let them maybe prioritize, or, you know, maybe the police, the fire, everybody will come together and help our kids out. That's the most important thing.
I definitely agree that, you know, we need to have those conversations, but I will, the one caveat to all of this is that our five-year projections are showing that next year's problem would be even worse. So if we were to dip into stabilization to fix FY '20, then in FY '21, we would be in worse shape than we are now with no safety net. So I am very nervous about the idea of considering dipping into stabilization, but in terms of asking for, you know, do we really want to make all of these cuts on the school side and virtually none on general government? That's a valid question.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Let's talk about, are there any further questions on that? So we had decided last, at our last meeting, that we were going to table discussion about cuts until after the budget balancing meeting. As I mentioned, the budget balancing meeting will be Wednesday, March 6 at 6:00 PM. And so after that, and we are expecting some more numbers that will be available by then. The GIC is scheduled to vote tomorrow on rates for individual plans. We already know that the aggregate increase across all plans across the state is expected to be 3.3%, but we don't know what that breakdown is, and that, those details are really important, but we should get more information on that tomorrow. And so hopefully, by the time we meet, budget balancing meets a week from today, there'll be a little bit more information available. All right. So let's move on to talking about the FY '20 budget with the override. So, Dr. Thompson?
Yes, thank you. So this presentation is on our recommended budget, which is a budget that comes from a successful override. Background, this is a preferred budget, and it is what, you know, if the override question ballot was successful, what it would provide. And basically, it repairs the structural deficit that has plagued the Norwood Public Schools for years. Every year, we are in a situation where we're trying to not do things and cut things. Unfortunately, there's kind of a belief out there that those are things that we do not need, those are things that we need to do our job and do our job well, and we have gone without several of them, and I'll get in more detail as we go forward for years. Our five-year strategic plan that we just approved in December really pivots on appropriate funding to be able to, it's very difficult, in fact, it's next to impossible to plan to move forward and to be proactive if you are constantly in a budget crisis, which is what we have been in. And we really need to invest in our classrooms and really work to meet our students' needs, meet them in real time, meet them early, so if they're going to be successful as they move on. And, you know, the students in our classroom are going to be our neighbors and our citizens very, very soon. So the goals, excuse me, the goals of this budget is to stabilize the budget and a long-term solution to the structural deficit and provide fiscal stability. We've talked before about a structural deficit. We've talked about the shortfall for this year. It was originally projected at 3.5 million, was starting to, it quickly turned to 4.1, and we've been struggling with that. That's been the not fun part of this budget process. There is an escape mechanism, there is a solution, that is the override question, but it gives us fiscal stability to move forward. We need to correct programmatic issues and provide academic opportunities in our classroom. Increasing efficiency, effectiveness, and achievement through forward planning. The strategic plan sets us up to do that. We need to have the funds to carry it out. We need to invest in the classroom, curriculum, instruction, professional development, coaching, these things that really have been successful in limited application here in Norwood. We need to spread that out, and we need to do that consistently. Restore lost programs and services. You know, when I first came here, I was told if it's cut, you're never going to get it back. I'm hoping we can change that because those are things that are actually needed. We need to target students' needs and improve performance. If we use targeted intervention based on, you know, modern curriculum and best practice, we can make sure our kids are making progress, lower our number of kids that are having to retake MCAS tests in the high school in order to get a high school diploma. This is different. Massachusetts is one of the, we have the highest standards in the nation, and we are one of the few states that actually requires students to pass a competency exam to get a high school diploma. That is very different than it was 20 or 30 years ago. We need to recognize and plan for our changing demographics and increasing student needs. And if we do that well, we will still see the achievement, the effort in our classrooms, both on our staff and on our students, is remarkable, and we need to support that. So the first thing is restoration. So we've been having very uncomfortable conversations about cutting things that are drastically needed, you know, so these non-override cuts would be restored. And specifically, we would be able to keep the Will of Child, Early Childhood Center open. We would not be overcrowding our elementary schools, increasing our class sizes. Athletics and fine arts programming would be restored. You know, we talked earlier, a couple weeks ago, about the forays and how important they are to the complete child. We heard from a former graduate here about how important the programs were to her development and her well-being and growth, and we'd be able to bring those back. Middle school and high school clubs, which a lot of kids gain a lot of experience and actually, in a lot of cases, you know, career pathways would be restored. The late bus for after-school activities, extra help will be restored, and we would be able to hire a principal for the Oldham School, because we would not be reducing our buildings. So what we've done is, we're going to talk about these things that we've put into this override restoration or restore budget and bring them back to our strategic plan. And again, you do have those copies at your table. They are here, they are also in our buildings, they are on our website for those who have not seen the strategic plan. But we're going to go back to our five objectives, which is investing and resource allocation, facilities and operations, innovation, innovative instruction and personalized learning, programs and pathways in our classrooms, and safe and supportive schools. So in the area of curriculum instruction, looking at the Strategic Initiative 3.1, establish standards, standardize instructional practices for the district based on best practice and build understanding among the teaching staff. We would like to establish an elementary literacy and writing coordinator, much like the math coordinator that we have, that in-house coaching. You've heard us talk about the ELA curriculum, the ELA task force work on looking at our curriculum, hoping to be in a position where we can replace that elementary writing and literacy curriculum for next year. But this would be a person much like our math coordinator, and that is a model that has worked and has worked very well. Our math scores in Norwood are at the high end in the state, and we would like to replicate that in ELA. And then, as well as bring in training and support and bring project-based learning to the position where it really should be. Also, under curriculum instruction, under the initiatives of 3.4, identify core instructional programming for each level and content area, ensure equity in horizontal and vertical alignment. And then 4.1, which is our pathways and programs, develop pathways and programs that capitalize on student interest and teacher expertise. So again, that curriculum review revise/replace cycle, the first would be English Language Arts at the elementary level, and I do have to be very honest with both the committee and the public, if the override does not pass, there is not money in the non-override budget to replace a 14-year-old curriculum that is significantly out of date, and we're looking at now 15 years. Curriculum materials for English language learners. Our English language learning staff does a great job, but they are cobbling together and creating things. There are curriculum materials out there that are vertically aligned, horizontally aligned, and go along with the standards at every grade level and subject area, so it does increase the effectiveness of the instruction for our English as a second language learners. And again, expand advanced placement opportunities and develop career pathways. This is staffing at the high school, looking at AP offerings of computer science, physics, environmental science, comparative government, world history, perhaps some others. And again, that consistent problem where we are turning kids away who want to pursue higher-level coursework. And then career pathways, and we were lucky and fortunate through the work of Dr. Galligan and his team to get that Innovation Pathways grant, but that seed money, we're going to need to have the people to actually do it. We have planning money at this point in time, and we're looking at the healthcare and social assistance career pathways. And then MASCOR, which is that career, state-determined career and college readiness curriculum being a requirement as a high school graduation from Norwood High, and that essentially equals a foreign language teacher. And those are cuts at the high school that have happened in the past. Looking at curriculum instruction, extending the access to technology at the elementary schools, 3.3, implement a professional learning system by using professional learning time for instructional improvement, includes high professional, professional development, professional learning communities, tiered supports, data teams, project-based learning, leveraging technology to optimize teaching and personalized learning, and increase student engagement. And we're also looking at 3.6, analyzing and synthesizing data to inform instruction for all students and creating personalized learning and targeted instruction. And we want to invest in tools for personalized learning. Right now, we have limited access to these. We use a lot of station rotation, where kids will use different reinforcement software or extension software. We're limited in that. We'd like to expand that along with print materials as well, so that we can really meet kids where they are, increase interest in the classroom and activities in the classroom. And again, the computer-based progress monitoring intervention system that we've talked a lot about, the piloting at the middle school right now, and that would be funds to put that into place. Under meeting the needs of our diverse learners, we would be addressing the strategic initiatives of 1.5, providing staffing to maximize teaching and learning for students and faculty, and 3.7, developing and implementing inclusive practices that consistently meet diverse teaching needs in pre-K through 12. And one of the things that we've seen is, you know, an increase in our English language learners and our student population, whether we need 1.5 for next year or it's 1 and then 0.5, but we need to look at some staffing there, and that's a combination of what level they're coming in and the numbers that are coming in. The middle schools already have had six or eight that have entered since the beginning of the year. Developing substantially separate classrooms to increase in-district programming to keep students in Norwood. We did have to roll a program up to the high school. We voted on that a couple weeks ago. There will be two students entering that program next year and seven more the year after. If we did not have that program, again, keeping students in the district, that would be approximately $100,000 per student. So this is much more cost-effective and better for the kids to be educated in their hometown. Restore staffing loss to the middle school, library and physical education over the last few years, and that will allow more scheduling, especially around PE, there is a kind of a limited piece there. Under the topic of social-emotional therapeutic programming, and looking at Initiative 3.8, providing therapeutic components to our sub-separate programs with high social-emotional needs across the district, training staff with a goal of meaningful inclusion for all students, and 5.1, developing a pre-K-12 systematic approach to building student and teacher capacity for social-emotional learning. And I will point out that this is one of the requirements in the governor's legislative proposal around social-emotional learning and that being a piece. So school adjustment counselors, to make sure that we have that, and a major focus will be making sure that there is a therapeutic program in our social component to our social-emotional classrooms, to make sure kids are maximizing that and really working on those skills that they need. Under the category of other needs, technology support, you know, we've added basically 1,600 devices in our system last year, and we cut support at the, in our technology department. We are drastically understaffed compared to others, and next year, we're going to add another 500 or so devices into our system. So more devices, more things to manage, more things to fix. Central registration, we want to bring that kind of centralized, that would probably be a part-time position. We do have some class size issues at the elementary level, one person to take care of that, and increasing supplies and materials to represent the real needs and uses. Right now, we do require or are relying a lot on our PTOs to fund things that should be in our budget. So that brings us to the summary page. So you can see the top is basically personnel, and, you know, we can talk that out of those positions, the ELL teacher would be a new piece, someone to work with intervention and support would be new, but the other, the adjustment counselors would be actually bringing us up to what is considered the standard request. But most of that, 993,855, is replacing positions that were lost. Okay? On the bottom part, this is, you know, these are materials, instructional supplies, professional development, you know, as well as, you know, general supplies and things along, but, you know, the equipment and the things that we need to do the work, and that totals $535,334.80 to bring us to our override request or our additional restoration request of $1,529,189.80. So I don't know if the committee has any questions or comments, but I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
I just want to make sure everybody is aware that this is basically the same information that was presented at the November 29 Budget Balancing Committee meeting, and these are based on the five-year projections that we've been talking about all school year, but this is just kind of giving you some detail as to where it goes and things like that, and how it all builds together. In the budget books for town meeting for this year, there will be the FY '20 budget without the override, so that will be the standard budget, and town meeting will approve that. And then there will be a separate warrant article for supplemental budget. And so our supplemental budget will include restoration of the cuts. We haven't figured out all the details of that yet because we haven't finished making cuts, and so we can't do that until the following meeting. But then it would also include this information. So if we can come to an agreement and, you know, approve what we want to put in this roughly $1.5 million in restorations and improvements, then we can have that part of it ready to go, and then, once we finalize a decision on cuts at our next meeting, then we can figure out what the whole supplemental budget would look like for the schools. And one thing I forgot to talk about in the timeline of things is that we are meeting again, hope to complete our budget on Wednesday, March 13, and we have been invited to attend the FinCom meeting and present our budget to them on Thursday, March 14. So it's going to be a quick turnaround, between when we approve and when we have to present. So, hope to discuss this tonight. So are there any questions, comments from the committee on this? Maura?
Yeah, thank you. One, is this in our packets?
No.
It just would have been nice to see beforehand. I just, I feel like at this point, we're asked to make specific comments on this, and I don't, it's hard when I haven't seen it before right now. I'm curious, the thinking behind the choice of the elementary school teacher being added at the Callahan. I know that some other schools have been hit with cuts, and we specifically moved a teacher over to the Callahan to help cover their class size issues last year, which I believe meant that the Oldham ended up being down two, and that's something that we've heard repeatedly from parents who have come before us, so I'm just curious why that teacher is going to that school.
That bubble is moving up through, but, you know, we can come back and look at that later on. But that bubble that I believe is now in second grade is going to third grade, so...
Right. But I guess my question would be, last year, we asked the Oldham teacher to move up a grade level to cover another specific bubble.
Right.
My only concern is, and I'm not, the only reason I'm specifying the Oldham is I know that they lost a teacher because of retirement last year, and then we moved one over to help the Callahan. And I believe that the Cleveland also has had some issues. They have some smaller class sizes, but I know the Boulge also has larger class sizes, so I'm just, I feel a little underprepared to talk about that specific one. It just, yeah.
So is there a reason for it, for the Callahan?
Just the size, the size of the classrooms and the number of students that are in them.
So next year, so it's the second-grade cohort across the district that is large at every school. But this year, at the Callahan, if we only had two second-grade teachers, we added a third, so there's three first-grade teachers, three second-grade teachers, two third-grade, two fourth, two fifth. So the second-grade cohort moves up to third grade, and it's projected right now that there'll be 49 kids, five who are in the task program. So one thing that I think is important to remember about the Callahan is they have 14 task kids across the board. Five of them are in this one cohort. So one-third of our elementary task kids are in now second grade going to third grade. So if we had third grade next year at the Callahan, 49 students, you know, divided by two, the third-grade classrooms are also really small currently at the Callahan, like the physical classroom space. But their projected first grade and second grade at the Callahan next year is also really large, so that teacher that we added this year for second grade, if she moves up to third, it still leaves first and second grade with a need. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And it's so ironic to talk about this now when, two weeks ago, we were talking about cutting teachers and increasing all these class sizes, so it's really hard to, like, put the conversation.
Right.
I think when we originally talked about this, I have to say, I think it's kind of unfortunate that our budget line items are so specific, you know, because I think it would be nice if we could just approve an elementary teacher and then decide even in August where the need is greatest, you know, once we have a better sense of what the numbers are.
Can we not do that?
Yeah. Jeff?
Well, except for, at some point, we have to assign a P-code to things so that people can see what the budget says now. So I think that's part of why it was like, well, all right, we know, you know, we can look at the Callahan as a possibility. But of course, we always have the ability to shift things around, but we wanted to, I think the goal for this was to say, like, okay, this is what we expect.
Right.
That if the override passes, the budget would be, the budget in the town system would be changed to reflect this, and that is called out building by building.
Right. Originally, I mean, the original conversation that we had last fall was about an elementary teacher. So, and, you know, and that might change between now and August too, as far as whether the need is more one place or the other, but...
So, I mean, we don't have to vote on this tonight if, I do definitely think that it makes sense to make sure we've all had an opportunity to review this, and I know these numbers weren't available until late this afternoon, so...
These numbers weren't?
Right. But in that form.
Right.
Oh, just the...
The, this has not changed, I mean, it's in a little bit of a different format, but it's the same conversation we've had since we originally talked. We had rounder numbers, talking about, you know, high-need students and programming, and we've kind of divvied that out a little bit more since then. But that 1.529 is still 1.529.
Can I ask why the salary, what is the starting salary for a teacher here in Norwood? What's the beginning salary?
It's around 44, but I don't have the numbers in front of me.
I'm asking Dr. Thompson. What is it?
Yeah, it's 44, 43.
So why do we have, if we're in such a budget crunch, why do we have almost a $58,000 job up there for a Callahan elementary teacher, an adjustment counselor at $60,000? I don't know what their starting salaries are. I don't know if they're different than a teacher's.
Yeah, they have master's degrees, so they're more.
And we also have a hire-down policy.
Well, we have a hiring-down practice, but...
Practice, I mean.
Yeah, but that, I mean, our average is about 65, so that's, so we use our average number because you might have, you know, someone that moves into another position.
Well, I worry about that when we have such a budget crisis, and I think we should be very conservative about that. If you're asking for all of this from the town, the town certainly wants to see that we're being fiscally responsible here in a $58,000 teacher where you can get a, you know, people will say, well, you want to get an experienced teacher, you want to get this, you can get fantastic teachers in their first year. And I have no doubt about that at all. So, you know, when you look at this, I'd rather see it more conservative than this. And, you know, yes, it might have to change a little bit, but the other thing about the Callahan elementary teachers, you know, if you say this and you put this out to the public, now the Callahan Elementary School thinks they're getting another teacher, and then we're going to say later on, well, maybe you're not. I mean, I think that's kind of wrong to do. And so I'd really like to, I'm not willing to vote on this tonight because this is the first time I've seen this, so it's just, I have too many questions.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? We can take this up again next time, but I just thought if there's questions now, we should ask. Maura?
It would be helpful for the high school AP programming of...
That of did not get...
Yeah, I figured, I wasn't really worried about the of.
Yeah.
But my question would be, it would be nice to see how that 272,364 is being broken down. Like, is it, because I know that we're looking at adding computer science, things like that, which I can assume the computer science teacher is likely more expensive because that's a specialization. So I would, I think it would just be helpful to see, like, I understand the, you know, high school mass core programming, you know, maybe even just put foreign language so we know exactly what that is. But I think we all kind of know that because we've talked about it. But again, to Michelle's point, if we're adding a foreign language teacher, 78,000, where did that number, like, that seems if our starting salary is 44. I mean, I understand that you want someone more specific for our computer science, but I just want to make sure that we're specific about that. So if we could break out the high school AP, what we think each one of those is going to cost and where we're adding it, I mean, if we're asked to be specific about the Callahan, we should be giving that same level of specificity to everything that's up there?
Is the line item different in the high school, though?
It's very different at the high school. It's just, you know, like, if you look in your budget book...
Yeah, I mean...
Right. I mean, if you look in your budget book under instructional salaries, like, it's called out by each elementary school, but then when you get to the high school, let's see, where is it? So the high school, it's 67.2 FTEs are all rolled into one line item of 5.992 million. So we don't, the budget does not specify at all which department, which, you know...
So we have the flexibility. I mean, so I think my point is a little, I guess I have two points. One, just from my understanding, I'd like to see it broken down for how much you think each one is going to cost to get to that 272. That's sort of why I was asking the question. But now that I sort of have understood that, just out of curiosity or, you know, which will inform my vote, is there no way to approve the elementary teacher and then assign the P-code later?
Sure.
I mean...
Right. But, I mean, the thing is, we have to be able, we have to be able to put it into the tool we have at this point in time. You have to put it someplace. I mean, you can say elementary, and that's basically what we've done up until tonight, is set one elementary teacher, and we figure out where that would best be.
Right. So, I mean, for the books for town meeting, could we just have it there as an asterisk of P-code TBD, once we decide what we need?
No.
I don't know. What do you think, Anne Marie?
No.
You need to assign a P-code.
For March, basically. Before we have any idea which building it really needs.
General first thought was that Callahan cohort.
So I'm very quickly crunching numbers, so do not hold me to anything that I'm about to say 100%. I had this analysis done on paper somewhere at home, but I do not have that with me. But what I'm looking at are two things. I'm looking at the current enrollment at the five elementary schools as of January 3, which I believe is the most recent report we were given. And then I'm also looking at the system-wide enrollment projections for the next school year. And, I mean, as we talked about before, the five elementary schools, there's such ebb and flow in class sizes, unfortunately, and how they're distributed. So although I personally feel all the schools have more than enough students in them already, which is part of what we talked about before with closing a school, the Cleveland incoming first-grade class is really small next year. It's actually the smallest across the district, where that does not usually happen at the Cleveland. So right now, Cleveland's fourth-grade class has, excuse me, third-grade class, which will be next year's fourth-grade class, has 80 kids in it, where their incoming first-grade only has 51. So because of some shifting numbers, I think you can keep your staff at the Cleveland, maybe just assign them to different grades.
Okay.
Same at the Bulge. So the Bulge current first-grade class is 72 kids. Their incoming is only going to have 59. So just with the way that some of the class sizes are shifting around, I think with the current Bulge teachers, you could keep the number of teachers, but maybe switch the classroom. Oldham also. Callahan, you can't for what we were talking about, and the other school where I think it might be an issue is the Prescott. So those are the two that have been on my radar when I was looking ahead, Callahan and Prescott. But I think I can help get more concrete numbers, so we have something to actually look at. I don't know if that helps at all without having a spreadsheet.
It's hard. I was listening, and I think I have that somewhere. It's just, like, that's information I needed to have in order to make this, to talk about this intelligently. I mean, I think we're going to...
Michelle, I had a question, but can I just ask Anne Marie a quick question since it's directly related to this? In the budget books and instructional salaries, we're looking at Department 602, there's P-code 0639, which is instructional salaries, special services. Is that special education across the district? Is that what that is? I was just trying to figure out if there's anything, like, I know the art and library and music and PE teachers that are, like, shared across the elementary districts fall under their own P-codes because they don't fall under any one school. So I was just trying to figure out, is there someplace that we could put an elementary teacher that isn't one school right now? But maybe not.
I mean, if you want to tuck it somewhere, that's fine. You're going to end up having to move it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we would have to move it.
Which will be a vote again, so...
Right. Yeah. Okay. Michelle, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, I think that we're going beyond our scope right now, and I also think it's up to the administration to have these numbers and to speak with the principals and figure this out. I mean, I really don't think that Tricia should be crunching numbers and all of us sitting up here doing something that we're not really supposed to be doing. It's not, we need to know this stuff before we make a vote. And I'm, my other question is about this AP programming. I have, I have a real problem with that. I have a problem with the number, and I have a problem with the amount of teachers. I know that when we had the results of our state tests, that it was noted how abundant we are in AP classes, and I understand that some parents complained because the kid couldn't get into physics and stuff like that. What I don't see here that really bothers me and that I'd rather see is helping our kids in response to intervention at the high school, which the principals stated, we have nothing up there as far as RTI goes. And I see, I see heavy on the kids who are in the AP program. I'm not for adding another foreign language teacher because of mass core. I think we have plenty of that there. I could be wrong with that, and I'll look into that. And the other thing that I have a concern about is the intervention specialist. I'm not sure the salary on that one and where that intervention specialist is going. So I'm not willing to vote on lists unless I have, and I've said this over and over again, facts and information, so that's what I need.
Right. That is someone to work with, that's part of that personalized learning piece and that coaching piece. So to go back to the, you know, it says AP program, but it's not just AP programming.
Well, that's what it says.
It's staff, I mean, when you have an AP teacher, they probably would teach one AP. There's four other periods that you would, in order to offer career pathways, we need to have people to offer the classes, so it gives you flexibility to develop those. It also gives you, you know, other classes or more academic specials. It gives you, you know, intervention time. It gives you different levels or an extra class in there. And again, these are, you know, the high school lost 4.8 core teachers. We're talking about in the last six or eight years.
I just spoke to a school committee person that was on here probably four or five years ago that added teachers and haven't lost teachers, so there's a disconnect there.
Well, I mean, if we, I mean, we did the personnel report for the last 10 years, and there's core teachers at the high school and the middle school that have not been, that have been lost and not been replaced.
But my point is, we're, we do very well in the AP programming, and it was noted in the state reports that we are, we are having abundance of AP programs, and it was, that's a good thing. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. That's a good thing.
No, 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 I don't, I don't remember that in a...
So, it's in the report. So if you go to the high school AP program for $272,000, I see three full-time teachers. My thought is, you're getting three full-time teachers for AP because that's what that says.
No, that's not, that's not...
Well, isn't that what that says?
That's the short condensed version of what those people would do. They probably would teach one AP class. There'll be four other classes that they would be teaching, some of which would be, you know, you know, other teachers would be teaching classes for struggling learners.
But I think Michelle makes a good point, that what we're, we've been talking about is adding teachers to the high school. And those teachers would be spread across all needs of the high school. But part of what they would be doing is we would be making sure that that did increase some of the AP offerings where we have been struggling with accommodating student requests. But it's also true, we have had the conversation before, that it's not all about AP.
No.
And so it may be that we need to adjust the text that goes with that.
Right.
Because as we said, this is all just falling into the line item of high school teachers.
Right.
And, Maura?
But, you know, there's also going to be a requirement to teach computer science that we do not have a person to teach. So that would be, so theoretically, one of those teachers would be a math teacher who might do an AP and computer science, and that is going to be a requirement in the next few years. But we don't have the staffing to do that.
But I know that the Italian program at the high school was cut sometime in the last four years because, I think it happened while I was on town meeting. I think, but I think it was four years ago because I think it was when I was on town meeting, but before I was on the school committee. So that was definitely a cut in foreign language program teacher at the high school. That's just the one that I specifically remember, but I believe there have been others.
I don't know if it helps, but I just have the presentation that was given on November 29, the budget balancing one that Dr. Thompson and Tony Mizuko did. And here it says the reductions in the past five to 10 years at the high school was 1.4 science teacher, two foreign languages, 1.6 social studies teacher, and then there was a reduction of .6 math and .2 music to convert the .8 back into the foreign language department. And we also lost an MCAS remediation teacher. So that was the high school in the last five to 10 years. At the middle school in the last five to 10 years, there was a reduction of two foreign language staff, one computer, .4 art, .6 PE, .5 librarian. So the PE and the librarian were already called out here.
But these weren't done all at once. These were done over the last five to 10 years.
No, these were over years.
Over the last five to 10 years.
Yeah, yes, I agree.
And then at the elementary level, in the last five to 10 years, there's been a reduction of eight elementary classroom teachers, the elimination of the gifted and talented program, two full-time elementary librarians, because there used to be a full-time librarian in each school, now there are .5 in each, I believe. And also in the last five to 10 years, we eliminated a kindergarten art program. So that's what I have in terms of what has been cut, some of which... So that's what I have in terms of what has been cut, some of which are now being brought back up in here, but not all.
And some of them were cut because of, you know, the population had flattened out, that we had decreased population. I think that when these were cut, it was balancing the budget and it was done by a school committee superintendent in a very thoughtful and reflective way. I mean, we are a public school and we have to be cognizant of that we can't have everything that we want, though we want everything and it would be beautiful to have that. But I mean, to, to, to look at over the last five to ten years, to me, that's not a huge amount of cuts to make. I don't think that's devastating to me. So, you know, I just, you know, I don't want people to think, well, other people, you know, we cut this and we cut that. Those people worked hard. I remember watching those, that process on school committee. It's one of the reasons why I ran for school committee was to, to help all of this stuff out. But I, I just think that, you know, it's, it's, we're not the only town that, that has that, that every once in a while we do have to cut due to attrition or due to population or due to whatever our needs are. So, you know, I just, I just really would like to go back to the table in, in, in my wish is to see more help with our needy children. That's, that's, I'd be more happy to see that than an increase with the, the AP because that's where I think our kids need it.
Yeah. And, you know, if you, if you go back, hang on a minute. So, you know, these high school teachers are not just teaching AP.
No, I said that.
That will be, that will be one of the things that they teach, but they could very well be teaching an MCAS class to some students.
If they're certified in it.
Well, if, if you bring in a math teacher to do computer science, then that would probably, and/or geometry or whatever, you're going to free up somebody to do those sorts of, those sorts of things. Right now, we do not have that. You know, we, you know, we're talking about curriculum materials for English language learners. We're talking about establishing a, you know, a writing and ELA coach. Project-based learning is, is in here and in these numbers.
The coaches for the elementary school.
Right. Well, we, but if, but if they learn to write and read well in elementary school, they're going to do better as, as we go forward. The tools for personalized learning, those are tools to work with kids at their level to move them forward. Okay? The computer-based progress monitoring piece is a huge piece of being able to give teachers the tools they need to do response to intervention. And we're looking at that for K to twelve. So, you know, you know, staffing for our ELL program, we are, we are at the, you know, our numbers have again increased and, and we are struggling to meet, to meet the needs there. So there, there is money and things in there because we talked about this last fall, and that was what the committee said to me, is they wanted to make sure we were addressing the ELL learners and addressing the, the struggling learners. So, you know, between the personalized learning, the assessment software, and, and the coaching and project-based learning, you are essentially doing that. Okay? I mean, there's nothing, what I've done is defined this in a different way, but the, but the, let me go back, sorry. That, that is the same number we've been talking about since the fall.
Teresa?
Yeah, I just, I spent some time organizing a lot of things because I know it's been a lot, so have a lot of paper here with me because I.
There's been a lot and it's been, you know.
Yeah, I, I have a specific bag now with color-coded folders. In the fall, we were given this, it said like override summary and it said draft on it because we were still working on it. And this, I think, came out, it was soon after like a national meeting that we had at the Willet when we really started to talk about needing to push for the override and what would that override number look like. And at that time, under general needs, it did say one elementary teacher at fifty-eight thousand, but it didn't specify to this level. But, you know, to Dr. Thompson's point, everything on there is on this summary draft from the fall. And then at our December fifth meeting, he gave us basically this again, but just revised a little bit, where he added some language in red. And I think if I'm remembering correctly, before we got this on December fifth, the budget balancing subcommittee talked about it in their meeting, and then we got this. So we have seen all this before, it just hasn't been in that format. So I do understand, like, why it seems confusing. And again, I think it's also really hard to now, like, flip the conversation that we've been having since January on a no override budget. I mean, we're, we're having to defend and, and discuss two very different budget situations, and it is a little confusing.
Yeah. So I think it's clearly the consensus of the committee that we want to have more time to review these numbers before we vote specifically on these. But any other questions we want to ask tonight before, Maura?
I have some specific things that I'd like more information on prior to the meeting so that I can be aware. I'd like a breakdown, and maybe if, if this is coming from the principals or some discussion with the administrative team, that'd be great, of why, if the Callahan is the recommendation, I'd like to know why, and I have some specific questions. We're looking at a cohort in grade two of forty-nine that are moving up, and we're trying to address that. However, if you look at the Prescott, there's a cohort of fifty-one in grade three that are now split between three classrooms that are now going to go down to two. There's a cohort of forty-two kids in fourth grade that's going to go to remain at two in fifth grade. That's very similar to the Callahan number that we're looking at, so why Callahan and not Prescott? And again, I'm not trying to pit one against another. I'm just saying these numbers are similar. Similarly, in grade two at the Oldham, you have forty-three students who will continue in, to two classrooms in grade three. In grade three at the Oldham, you have forty-six students who are going into grade four. You have, I mean, it's, these numbers are similar. If we're looking at forty-nine, you know, in fact, the largest number we'd be looking at is fifty-one in grade three at the Prescott, which are currently in three classrooms, which are now going to go down to two. So if the, if the choice is being made all over numbers, that doesn't seem to bear out to me. So I would just like either, I, I don't know whether it's a, I don't know how you want to do it, but I'd like some information of if we have to assign a P code, which I will accept that we have to sign a P code, then I need far more information as to why one or the other to assign said P code. The other thing I would just like a little bit more information about is the intervention specialist, just specifically what they're going to be doing. I mean, because the problem is, I don't necessarily want to sit here and say, I'm going to parse, you know, the decisions that the administrative team has been, is being made, but part of our job is to manage the budget. And there's been quite a lot that has been eliminated. There's been, I mean, if we're going to look at one program that's been decimated over the past five to ten years, foreign language, you've lost two teachers at the high school and two at the middle school for a total of four foreign language teachers. So if we're trying to make it a mass core requirement, you know, is that covering it? And I, I mean, part of my, my point is, if, if our, if our job is to manage the budget and therefore help to direct the direction of, of the school system, then I just want to know more about what the intervention specialist is going to do before I say, yes, that's where I want to spend seventy-eight thousand dollars as opposed to building up foreign language. Or the fact that our gifted and talented program has been totally eliminated at the elementary school, which everything says if you start early, fantastic. It, it seems to help. And, and my other question is, if we're looking at, you know, you're saying that it's not just going to be AP, awesome. Can I just, I, I, I'm worried about not having that MCAS remediation teacher. So if I just could have some breakdown of it's going to be, and I know you can't get to this granular level, but again, I just want to make sure that we're being smart about how we allocate these funds. And maybe it is that the intervention specialist at seventy-eight thousand is going to stay. I just want to know a little bit more about what that is. In, in a way, I, I, I think, I think to, to Michelle's point, we have to defend all of these numbers. And, and I know that we've seen this in various forms. I just, you know, I just, I feel like I need, I need a little bit more. And, and the other thing I want to know is the high school mass core programming, the one FTE. I just want some indication that that is going to solve the foreign language problem because from everything I recall from Mrs. Durain coming up here, I think it was twenty seats that we were short in AP Spanish. And I also seem to remember that I think it was either, I, I just, I don't remember if it was Spanish one or Spanish two, that it was, we were at max. So like, if a student moved in mid-year and had been taking Spanish in Brookline, there wasn't a seat for them. So I just want to make sure that that's going to cover it before I say, yes, that one teacher for Spanish and the intervention specialist. You know, I, I, I just don't feel like I'm, and I'm not meaning to pick on the intervention specialist, it's just the one I can point to where I'm like, I'm reasonably intelligent about these things and I'm not sure what that person would do.
Okay, any further questions? Teresa?
Was there any discussion around getting art back at the Willet?
Yeah.
Like, related to this? I know it's come up with like the strategic plan.
Yeah, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't in that original one point five million. So no, at this point. That doesn't, that doesn't, well, and again, if the state, you know, this is, this is step one.
Yeah.
It's not everything. And, you know, and I, and I don't think people out there, there's still things that are not in this that, that, you know, I think I said to you, you know, I easily could have sat and tripled that number and come up with everything that would be great to have. This is a good first step, gives us some flexibility through hopefully, you know, the rest of the fix to the state funding and being able to plan and move forward.
Yeah.
Okay, we can be smarter, we can do better with our, our kids so that they're doing better as, as we move forward. So there's less kids, you know, getting special services for whatever reason, moving through, which then allows you to recoup some FTVs and repurpose them, be smarter, you know, and I can give you, you know, also, you know, we have a chance, we were offered to apply for a grant for, for a program that is probably one of the best personalized learning programs for math out there. But we don't know we're going to have the money in next year's budget to do it. There's also a whole lot of heavy lifting with other things, so we had to say no and hopefully the grant will be there next year. So that's a perfect example of not having the fiscal stability to plan to move the district forward.
A lot of questions, a question that comes up in the, in the public eye, people who are weighing to, to, for or against the override. And I, I think people are listening and they, they are trying to weigh in. And they need, they need information. But the question that comes up to me a lot is if people are going out on a limb and some people are to, with their taxes being increased, how do they know that all of this? What measure do we have to prove to the public that this indeed makes us a better school system? And I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way if it comes across that way, but they want to know, all right, so you, we put all this money into a school system. How does the public know that next year, the money is being used for exactly what we say it's going to be used for and it has improved our school system? Like, for example, you know, the, the high school is on warning and in need of intervention from the state. How do we know that? And I think it's a good question. I, I don't think it's an ignorant question. I think it's a good question.
No.
Like, okay, if you, if I give you this, how do I know that what I'm getting back? So how do we guarantee to the public that all of this, because this is a lot of stuff, is going to improve our school system? And I don't really know how to answer them, so maybe you can answer them.
Yeah, well, I, I can try. I mean, first off, where we have, this district has made the investment, you have seen the results. The problem is you have not done it consistently over time for years. And the two best examples are your elementary math and your elementary science. You've invested in the coaching, you've invested in the materials, you have the results. Where you've been cutting, you're falling behind. Okay? The other thing that I would say, which is for fear of sounding like a, a smart aleck, is if you don't do something, how is the district going to get better? Because it's not. If you don't do something, you're talking about taking it apart.
But our system is not a part.
It will be if they over, if, if this fiscal structural deficit is not fixed, we will start moving backwards at a fast rate. So, you know, and as far as guaranteeing, there is all sorts of accountability that comes out every single fall, and that is what this committee is, is here to do, is to make sure that the plan, the strategic plan that you've approved, is what happens. So, you know, we've done a tremendous amount of planning on how to improve. We're in the process of doing the action plan on how to do the first year of moving forward with this, which has turned, turned out to be a very difficult piece because of that lack of fiscal stability. But there's a good, there's a good plan for what this district should be based on the strategic plan that you folks have approved. Okay? And you're here for the accountability piece. That's why people elected you to be in these seats. You know, and, you know, and I have to say, I mean, the, the, you know, the people in the classroom have worked really, really hard to stay where we are. They are working really, really hard. And, you know, I see that every day. And, you know, without some of, and you've heard me say it before and I'm going to say it again, but without the quality of the people that are there and the efforts that they're making, you know, I, I strongly suspect that the results would be worse than what they are. But you have dedicated, hard-working people in the classrooms.
Thank you.
Alec, did you want to speak?
Yeah, yeah, I think Michelle asks a very important question, and it's something we deal with every, every year. So it's not just the MCAS, that's certainly one measure, but the access test, that all our ELL students have to take the access test. So we want to see those scores improve over time. So that's one measure that we can say, look, if you invest in the ELL staffing and curriculum, we hope to see this needle move in a positive direction. And the accountability system you mentioned has, I've forgotten the exact number now, but it's got like something sixty-seven different indicators all in, in this accountability system. Attendance is one of them. So that's another thing we, we want to track and say, if we've got the proper social emotional supports in place, we're going to see less student discipline referrals, we're going to see greater student attendance, less tardies, less absenteeism, you know? Those are the stats that we have access to, that we can track and share with the public. All of that stuff is public information anyway at the DESE site right now. You know, so you've got the AP results, and it's not just the scores that we care about. We want to see more kids involved in high-level rigorous coursework. They may, you know, and the more you involve in the AP program, the lower your scores are going to be. That's just, that's the way it is. And so, you know, you have to counterbalance that and saying, well, our, you know, our numbers of threes, fours and fives may have dropped a bit, but we have twice the number of kids taking academically rigorous courses, and that's a good thing. So, you know, we've got all those stats and numbers that we collect and, and can share with the public. So you've got the MCAS, the access, the APs. You know, our SAT scores have been a constant battle because that, that is a complicated indices. You know, you've got to have kids that start reading at a very young age and have support at the home right throughout to have strong SAT scores. It's not just the schools that contribute to those. So, you know, but hopefully we'll see some of that improve if our, if our reading instruction improves, starting at the elementary level, and our writing instruction improves. Those SAT scores should come up. You know, and the ACT scores, we keep track of them as well, which are more curriculum-oriented, standardized tests. So, and there are probably a few other indices that I've forgotten, but all of that is what we would use to show that this investment is paying off. And then the other way you see the investment paying off is, is just with your eyes. I mean, look at the kids who are performing onstage and in town, you know, during, during Norwood Day. I mean, that's what makes Norwood such a proud community. And if you don't support that, you're not going to get that level of performance. Look at all the, you know, the Globe Awards that the art department gets, the music awards that the music department, that's data, you know? And if we lose the program, you're not going to get those awards. Pure and simple. So. So.
But we're not losing that program.
Well, except we have voted to eliminate the marching band. We've eliminated funding for the marching band.
If I, if I can add just one more and I, and I've been beating the personalized assessment and intervention piece. But that's your tool to do RTI. Right now, and, you know, I'm going to pick on the, on the math program and I know that we do it elsewhere, but it's done system-wide the same way in math, where we do periodic, system-wide assessments, we look at results. But it's kind of labor-intensive. This gives teachers a tool to know where kids are and know what they need to do to help the kids get where they should be. Okay? We don't really have that tool. Teachers are delivering curriculum and then we get to, you know, the spring and we hope they're all going to do well. But if you ask the teachers, they'll tell you, we think they're going to do well or I feel good about, but there's not hard data on how kids are doing because teachers do not have those tools. Okay? So if you're constantly looking at, if you have updated curriculum, updated teaching methods and tools for teachers to make sure kids are making progress in real time, you will have better results, you will not have kids falling behind, you will not have kids entering special ed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? So, you know, you know, the, the hoping that, that the kids are going to do well and then waiting until the fall to see is just not a good way to make sure that we're making progress. And that's, that, that's a piece of the puzzle as well.
Michelle?
To Alex, thank you, Alex, for that explanation. I think maybe what might be a good idea is if you even go to the papers on a quarterly basis or just even a report on the school committee, updating the public about, you know, if, if the override does pass, just updating the public about all the good things that you said that you could measure. I think, I think you've got, you know, your explanation was excellent, I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And, but maybe, you know, rather than just us publicizing the MCAS scores, talking about, you know, as you go through this next year, you know, your milestones that you meet, I think would be worthy because, you know, the public is concerned and the eye will be on you. So, you know, it might be, if you can do that, whenever you can, it might be a good idea. It's up to you.
Maura?
Thank you, just a couple of things I'd like specificity about for next time. I understand the curriculum refresh is 300,000, we sort of allocated every year. But if we're also allocating 112,000 for ELL curriculum, how is that? Because I thought the whole point was the first year we were going to do a curriculum refresh on ELA. So I'm just, I want how.
Okay, so, so the curriculum refresh will go through the curriculum cycle, so.
Right, no, I understand that.
And actually, we were talking about, we were talking about what that would be because obviously we've been working on elementary ELA this year. But we were talking about what, what would be that curriculum for, for next year. But as far as curriculum materials, that's not all of them.
Okay.
Some of those, some of those things, you know, would be software subscriptions, so they would be kind of ongoing costs.
Oh, I see.
So that's, that's enough money to get started, but you're going to have to refresh some of that.
Okay.
And we'll, I mean, and those are expanding over time.
I see.
And as that goes through, more would be shifted into personalized learning and more would be shifted into the project-based learning.
Out of the curriculum refresh, okay.
Yeah. No, out of the, out of the second line, the ELA curriculum.
Would be shifted to where?
Would be shifted towards more, towards the personalized learning and the, and the project-based training.
I see, but the curriculum refresh.
The curriculum is the curriculum is the ELA.
Okay.
Right.
Go ahead.
So that would rotate from like English.
Right, no, I understand that. But I just was trying to figure out how that was different than the 112.
That's, that's specifically, and again, Michelle's talking about struggling learners and kids who need intervention.
That's all.
Those are tools to do that.
Okay, great. So now, how is that different than intervention supplies?
Those are more paper-based pieces.
Okay.
Somewhat, and, you know, again, you know, so, you know, the personalized learning is probably more software.
Yeah.
The intervention supplies is more paper-based.
Right.
Pieces. But those would, you know, and again, this is what, you know, people want to know exactly where it's going to be. But as we go through, and again, being smart and being able to plan and going forward, those would move as we develop those programs.
Right.
So it might be materials in, in the first year, a little bit of PD, but then it might be more professional development in the next year and then it may be some coaching, you know, along with that.
Right. So I guess, here's, here's the, and again, this is where I'm having, having a problem, is personalized assessment intervention software. You've done a great job of explaining to me exactly what that is. That's that monitoring so that we know how students are doing now so we can make our interventions now as opposed to in the fall when we get MCAS data, right? I understand that 39,000 makes a ton of sense to me. But then you're saying then that there's also software within the personalized learning 112,000. Okay, I'm kind of understanding that, that's, that's giving some more personalization. But if 53,000, which is a teacher, is for supplies that's paper, I, I don't understand that. And I'm not, I'm not meaning to say,
Right.
don't do that, do this instead. I'm just saying, if I'm being asked to vote on that, because we have to assign a P code. So if I'm being asked to vote on that, but then I'm only adding in one foreign language teacher, when we've lost four, I just want to make sure that I understand what that is so that I can give it my full support. Because right now, that, my concern is that seems terribly vague for 53,000.
Okay, and unfortunately, my notes from our discussion on Monday are sitting on my desk. But, but, but those, you know, again, I've talked about the first step.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and be able to plan and move forward. You know, those, you know, through our discussions and our budgeting would, would evolve over time from intervention supplies to, you know, more software pieces or perhaps, perhaps, perhaps in one year, 300,000 doesn't cut it for a curriculum. Because right now, we're talking 300,000, that's just elementary, that's not a K, that's not K-12. Okay, so 300,000 is, is a pretty conservative number. Okay? And it's based on, and it's based on the real number from doing the elementary curriculum.
Sorry, I'm trying to just do some quick math. So if I'm correct, and someone check me because I just did this very fast. Like the curriculum refresh, I'm, total sense, I'm, I'm on board. But we're looking at intervention, which I fully agree we need to do. I guess my question is just, between the ELL curriculum refresh, the personalized learning, which we're saying is some of that intervention, right? Then intervention supplies, then the software, we're spending 204,663 on intervention, which I'm not, I want to be very clear, I am definitely not saying we don't need intervention.
Right.
I just need to know, like, do we need that much? Or, because I mean, also, obviously, things that are going to help students are also teachers in the classroom. And we, we're adding in one elementary teacher, but we've lost eight over the last five to 10 years. And as you said, if we're trying to, to balance in adding in positions to help keep class sizes down, like, we're putting it one place because there's like two extra students. It's not like the other one doesn't need it. So that's all I'm asking for.
Right.
And I, again, I just want to be very, very clear. I am not saying I am not in favor of intervention. I am 100% in favor of giving everything we can to identify the struggling learners who need our help so we can get their help, get that help to them as soon as humanly possible.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we've, we fought this hard to get the override going. I just, I, I just want to make sure that 204,000 is really what we need for that.
It's what we need in step one to have the materials and the tools to do it.
Okay.
Okay? And then that is going to change over time into different kinds of tools.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And maybe some coaching. Okay? Maybe some consulting coming in with how to do it at a higher and higher level. But you can't start till you have the tools.
150%, just give me more on what intervention supplies is for 53,000.
Yep.
The rest of it I understand.
Yep.
All right, so shall we take the rest of this up next time?
Oh, sure.
Most considerable.
All right, thank you, Dave, is there a second? Thank you, Maura, all in favor, unanimous.
Can I just clarify one thing? So our next meeting, March 13th.
Yes.
We pretty much have to finalize this as well as, as it stands right now, $950,000 of reductions from the non-override budget.
Yes. There will be pretty much nothing else on the agenda next time other than budget. And, you know, as I said, budget balancing meeting will be March 6th. We will share information from that as soon as possible. You know, and we usually, usually the budget balancing committee gets some preliminary numbers prior to the meeting, I'll share those prior to the meeting and then, you know, whatever the, the decision of the meeting is.
So I'm worried that's a little ambitious. Just, our budget hearing is the very next day?
It is.
For both. I mean, I, I, I'm not, I'm not meaning to be flippant about it, I just.
I know.
I, I just worry a little bit that those are, these are hefty decisions that were, and I guess my, I'm not, I don't, I'm not really proposing a solution, I'm just more saying that I think it's going to be incredibly important that we have this information early so that we can email questions to get that information because as we are being, as has been made abundantly clear, we're making these decisions in pen, not in pencil. And, and the only reason I'm saying that in that specific way is like, is it going to the Callahan or the, or the Prescott? That's a decision we have to make that apparently can't then be like, wait, but we got numbers and we want to. I mean, we can later, but you know what I'm saying. And I, I just worry that between the two budgets, it's going to be things that are really quite difficult. So again, I, I don't have an, an answer for this, I'm just saying that I, it concerns me.
Absolutely. But I definitely agree that part of it is that we get information early and then the committee, you know, forwards their questions to the administration and, and, you know, so that we're prepared with information in our packets next Friday.
Could we also have that presentation as well?
Oh, absolutely. I don't know, is it on the drive now?
No, it's not.
Just out of curiosity, if we, and this is a big if, and I'm, I'm confident we will finish and it'll be great. But if we don't, is there any chance of moving our FinCom hearing to give us a little breathing room? And I know we only have one meeting scheduled in March, but maybe.
I think the thing is if we, if we, we will have something to present to FinCom, something to discuss with FinCom on the 14th. And so I plan to go to the FinCom meeting on the 14th and discuss with them. I would love to be able to tell them the budget is balanced and we have completed all of our votes. But if we haven't.
Okay.
Then we will show them where we are.
Okay, great, as long as that's.
You know.
A possibility, okay. Thank you.
The, typically, the, the general government asks for our numbers to feed into the town meeting books by the end of March. So there is some room.
Okay.
After March 13th, but it's just, you know, if we can finish it before the FinCom meeting on the 14th, that would be ideal.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any more budget items? Okay. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, just a couple of things, most of which are two dates and, and two updates. Student Government Day, if you could put this on your calendar, April 10th, Wednesday, April 10th, is Student Government Day. We will be hosting high school students at that point in time. I would love to have, if people were available on that Wednesday, to work with them, that would be great. March 13th at 6:30 at the high school, Andrea Vaughn will be doing a community forum on protecting your children from, from abuse and sexual predation. So if you, please make note of that, that does conflict with our meeting, but that will be at the high school. Monday's windstorm did cause some damage to the solar panels on the top of the high school. We are working with that with our insurance company and what have you, but they went from here to almost 90 degrees. So there's a row of them that our Buildings and Grounds staff is working on. And then yesterday, we had a strategic planning session that made good progress on our action plan. We have kind of narrowed it down to a one-year action plan. I was originally trying to get multiple years, but that has proved a big chunk to, to choose. So we're going to work on, you know, plans that will be completed for a year from June. And we're currently scheduling the next date, so that will be coming out to you soon. And that's all from me.
Okay. On late agenda, I have one thing. After I read the warrants, I realized that there was this big orange revised paper on my desk that I was supposed to read. So I just wanted to make one correction for the record, that the second Buildings and Grounds warrant was actually $100 less than what I said. So it's $30,999.96. So it's a grand total of $2,410,069.10. Just to let the record reflect the correct number on that. And I don't have any other late agenda, so then we move into policy. And Teresa, did you want to talk about the field trip policies?
Yeah. Hopefully that we can take care of this pretty quickly.
Yeah.
So we started to talk about it, I don't even remember when, but when we realized there was a discrepancy across some of our policies. So in front of you, you have four different policies that are all related to field trips and student travel. So in file IJOA, if you look under where it says authorization, it states that permission for all overnight and out-of-state trips requires 60 days, to be brought before, 60 days in advance. But if you look at policy JJH, which says student late-night or overnight travel, it says no less than 30 days prior. So that's one thing we have to figure out, do we want it to be 30, do we want it to be 60? In file IJOA, again, the first one I just referenced to you, it does state that ordinary day field trip, so the way I'm reading this is if it's a day trip, not out-of-state and not overnight, then that requires three weeks. So that's a third timeline now thrown in there. And then if you look at policy IJOA-1, there is an exception to if it is student participation, student participation in tournament competitions or contests, which is a situation that was brought to us at our last meeting. I forget now, I'm sorry, exactly what for, one of the.
Off-state musical.
Off-state musical, thank you. So we had started to have that discussion last time of, well, what if it is a competition and they can't give us, you know, the 30 or 60 days notice? So I guess, first question is, what do we want this timeline to be? Three weeks, 30 days, 60 days?
Just looking at this, I, I see different reasons. But I, I propose that if it's something out of the country, 60 days, because that's a major undertaking. I think 30 days for out-of-state is reasonable with an amendment saying, you know, if it's across the border, Rhode Island to visit the zoo, we don't need to have that come before us. I'm just suggesting that. For sake of Rhode Island is really just a neighboring town.
Right.
I'm all for everything here, for our supervision, et cetera, et cetera. And then the exception of contests or tournament where we might not have enough time for 30 days' notice. I think, so basically I would say, out of country, 60 days. Normal, out-of-state, 30 days, with the exception of competitions, et cetera. You know, within reason.
One thing I noticed is that the 60 days, doesn't say it has to come to the school committee 60 days beforehand. It says that the, the request for, for such travel shall be made at least 60 days in advance of the proposed trip to the school principal. And he, she shall forward the request completely documented to the superintendent of schools. And then obviously it would come to us after that. So I think part of, I can sort of understand why there's a different timeline in that it, you know, should, it should, there should be some time for it to go to administration. Like if it needs to be at us 30 days in advance, then it shouldn't be at them 31 days in advance. You know, they, and, but I do question this file IJOA-1, the field trips. I, I, I think the, is this the one that had the exception for the?
It is, yeah.
So I wonder if we can't just roll that into this other policy? Like it just seems redundant to have this extra thing, which seems to, like it says all students have parental permission slips for trips. Of course they do, but our other policies say that too. So I, I don't see the value of having this separate document.
I, I think and I don't know, because obviously it was not here in 2003. But I, I think this, from what I understand by looking at all our policies, some of the policies come straight from the MASCE. So every so often, the MASCE releases something that they recommend or sometimes require that you add in. So I think this is a, pretty much like a, a template from MASCE, where IJOA, I think was more of a Norwood-specific one.
Yeah.
And this one was first drafted in 91, last touched in 94. So my guess is in 2003, when this came along, they just added it in and didn't look at.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, two years. So, I mean, you know, two years ago, we had started to talk about doing like a thorough, what's the word, I'm even looking for. We were on it of the policy book, and we didn't get very far, because there's a lot in that book.
Right.
And there's a lot going on, but there probably does need to be done if somebody wants to do that with me.
I, I would love to do this with you, because this is really near and dear to me, the field trips, and I'm just cracking up that they actually wrote the policy in 1994 that all students must be neat and clean. So, you know, I think this definitely needs a rewrite.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think we could probably, as a committee, decide to just eliminate this one, unless there's anything at a MASC level that I'm not aware of, this is, we have to have it.
I mean, MASC just provides us with guidelines, they don't have any authority to tell us, like-
Yeah.
You know, they're super helpful in terms of helping us understand state law and things like that, but I don't think that-
Okay.
Because they recommend it, we have to do it.
Yeah.
I just want to make a quick point. The committee did approve the global travel document, and that in it has out-of-country, because you really need to plan far ahead, and that's, that's one year and a year and a half to be, is preferred.
Yeah, and that I don't think is reflected anywhere-
Right.
Because that was considered more of the procedure under that admin.
That's something that probably should be cross-referenced in here, out-of-country, referred to-
Can you send that to me?
Yep.
Because I don't know if I'll be able to quickly find where I have that.
Laura? Thank you. So I would agree that it would be helpful to have IJOA-1 wrapped up into I O, IJOA in general. And in terms of, of recommendation, I think to put authorization to, to, if the procedure has been, which I believe it, it's, you know, superintendent, I, I remember this from my time here, that out-of, out-of-country field trips, again, it's a year to a year and a half. I think that should be specified. That permission for all out-of-country field trips should be a year to a year and a half prior to the departure of the trip. I personally would recommend, just my opinion, keeping the 60 days notice for overnight field trips and 30 days for general field trips, because with overnight, you know, you might be dealing more with insurance, things like that, there are more kind of things to have to deal with. But I think we should specify whether this is to the principal or to the school committee. And I think it should be to the school committee, because we have run into problems with that time and time again. So I think specify that we, as a committee, or whoever is sitting in these chairs, would like to see out-of-country, a year and a half to a year, and we should specify that. 60 days for overnight, 30 days for regular field trips. And then if we are gonna kind of roll all of this into IJOA, I actually, I, I would like us to, I, I understand it's kind of quaint, but all students must be neat and clean. Who's deciding what's neat and clean?
Who is?
It's on this, the last page. I would just, I would recommend changing that to all students, chaperones, and staff are expected to represent Norwood at the best, in the best light possible, or to behave and, you know, present, you can make it delicate, I don't know how to make it sound, but like, I'm just not comfortable, like, what are we really gonna be, like, that's just absurd.
Okay.
Okay.
What are people's thoughts around out-of-state versus in-state? Because, you know, today's point, a lot of these day field trips are just to Rhode Island or just up to New Hampshire.
Canterbury Lake, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
So do we feel comfortable that any, just a day?
Other districts, because of where we are, have actually made it a, a distance. If you're traveling over 100 miles in one direction, then, because it doesn't, I mean, 45 minutes, you know, 30 minutes-
The Roger Williams Zoo isn't really an exotic location if you grew up in Norman.
Well, it depends on the field. However, yeah, so, you know, so something to consider is, is a distance. If it's over 100 miles, or I'm destroying 100 now, but then you need to, X, Y, Z.
I would definitely be open to a, a change like that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
But I definitely agree that I want to make sure that the school committee, so I guess the request should come to the school committee at least 30 days in advance, but, but then I guess the question is, does the school committee have to approve it at least 30 days in advance? Like, where does our meeting schedule fall in this? And I know a couple of years ago, we ran into an issue with the cheerleaders going to Florida and parents begging us to schedule an emergency meeting over Christmas vacation, and, and we did, and, but I really don't like to get ourselves in that situation. We're all volunteers and we, you know, have pretty busy schedules, and so I think it's reasonable of us to ask people to respect our schedules and get things to us in a timely manner.
So how would that type of situation, would that be the exception for tournament competition and contests? Because that's what the cheerleaders were doing, right? Weren't they going to a tournament?
Yeah.
Well, in that particular situation, they were going to a tournament, but the delay was not due to the fact that they had-
Just found out.
Just found out.
Okay.
It was, there was some miscommunication as to what was necessary in order for them to go.
Got it.
But, but I think maybe we do want to say, we need to approve it 30 days in advance, and, and we've also stated that they shouldn't be paying for, you know, making payments for things and things until we've actually approved.
Yes.
And so they probably would want, if they're buying plane tickets or something like that, they probably need us to, you know, make a decision, well, more than 30 days in advance. So, but I guess if, if the request goes to the administration 60 days in advance, then that should give enough time to spend a week or so getting through administration and then time to get on our agenda, because we do meet, you know, generally every two weeks.
Does that seem reasonable?
So what is, yes, it does, sorry. I said yes in my head and didn't say it, I apologize. What is everyone's thought on, if you go back to file IJOA, just with the definition? Because I, I just want to make sure we're, we're still talking about everything. So it says, "A field trip is any trip off school property which does not include games and practices in connection with our athletic programs, as well as local, district, state, regional, national music festivals and rehearsals in connection with our music program. It does apply to those trips taken during school time, on weekends, holidays, and vacations." Is that kind of saying two things?
I find that very hard to understand.
Yeah.
Laura?
I would just, so, does the art and theater program not go on? Of course they do. They have the METG festival, they have things like that. So I think, like, just simplifying it, "A field trip is any trip off school property which does not include games, practices, rehearsals, performances, or presentations in connection with our athletic or fine arts programs." Period.
But the tricky thing is, like, we did just approve the Allstate Music Festival.
Right.
Right? So-
Some of those-
And tonight, we're gonna be asked to approve the All East.
I know.
Right.
Right, and some of those, in that, in both, in all three of those cases, is the one we're gonna look at, those are overnight trips.
Right.
Right.
And the school committee should approve those just for, just for liability purposes.
So then, should it just be that a field trip is any trip off school property?
But I do understand, like, you know-
Well, you could, you, you could say non-overnight, or non-out-of-state. I mean, you know, if you make field trips, day trips, and overnight-
Right, because then you're getting into, like, the Magicals perform at the Elks and they have to go for a rehearsal. Are we gonna have to approve them going down Winter Street? No.
Yeah.
Where's the insurance?
Well, there is a hill there, so-
And truck pottles until we get the money for roads.
I think Laura's saying she wants to write this policy, that's why.
That's what I heard too, Teresa.
It's funny, you'll, you'll get a policy and it'll be hilarious.
No, I could've sworn, I, I heard her say she wanted to write a comedy, I think that's-
Oh, yes.
And I, I definitely understand that we don't want, like, you know, parents, when they're, when they sign their kids up for an athletic season, they, they sign a permission slip for the, that's a blanket thing for the athletic season, and they don't sign an individual permission slip every time-
They go somewhere.
They go to a game.
Right.
Right? You know, this, like, during the soccer season, the kids play like two or three games a week. You don't collect individual permission slips for every game.
No, that would be such a headache.
Yeah.
Well, that's not considered a trip, is it?
Right, I know, so I, that definitely, we shouldn't be a field trip, but then the question is, like, and if the marching band is, is performing in, you know, a competition and they're all going somewhere, that's not really a field trip. But maybe we could say, unless they stay overnight, in which case, any overnight trips should be approved.
So what about the situation? So last spring, we approved for, like, the elementary fifth grade chorus orchestra band when they went to, whatever they call that one.
Great East.
Yeah, the Great East. So we, so we approved that, but then reading this policy, we probably should not have because it was a competition.
Yeah.
Well, and it wasn't out-of-state and it wasn't overnight. Oh, it was out-of-state.
It was out-of-state last year, yeah. The, the Biggie, or the Springfield they went to, Canterbury Lake, yeah.
Yeah.
So then, doesn't it make sense just to say exactly that, that excluding games, practices, performances, rehearsals, unless it is overnight or out-of-state?
Yeah.
Doesn't that just simplify it? Because, I mean, then you're saying that, you know, if they're going into all-state, we don't really need to approve it unless it's overnight or out-of-state. I mean, and I think that's reasonable. Like, I, I just, I don't think if we're, you know, we don't approve it when the elementary school kids go, you know, do the Freedom Trail and do the Duck boats, and we shouldn't.
Although it's still, it's still, those still count as a field trip, so let's remember that this policy is about things that happen to field trips, and it doesn't say that all field trips have to come to the school committee for approval. This says all field trips have to, like, the purpose of the trip, including the educational advantages, needs to be listed in the itinerary, and there needs to be a list of students who are participating, and all that stuff absolutely applies when the third grade goes to Plymouth Plantation.
Right. But it's where you don't have to approve it, is my line.
We don't have to approve it.
So maybe just what we should be defining is, a field trip is any trip off school property which does not include games, practices, blah, blah, and we, all that about athletics and fine arts. Or then, also curricular programming, right? But then just specify the definition of what should be approved by the school committee, right? And then just, however, any trip that is overnight, out-of-state, or further than 100 miles must seek approval from the school committee, and then we go into authorization. Right? Although that's-
I think that's-
That's already there.
Authorization. No, it's, it's quite elegant.
Exactly, that's, yeah, so can we be done? Like, that seems clear.
Yeah, I think, just, just so I'm, I'm clear, as I'm making some edits, with the athletic competitions and the arts competitions, we would still want other conditions in this policy to apply, though.
Right.
Like, the fundraising and permission slips and chaperone requirements, so does that still fall under this, or do we have to have a separate policy for that type of travel?
I, I don't know that we have the same chaperone requirements for athletic teams that we do for, you know, oftentimes, there'll be one coach on the bus with, you know, 20 or more kids, which I think, you know, that's appropriate for high school kids to-
Right.
-go on a bus to a, a game. This seemed so simple, didn't it?
It really did. I should have known.
That would be ridiculous.
But I think we're in a, it's from what I'm hearing, the consensus is, nobody's ready to vote on anything tonight.
No, I need to.
But we, we think that IJOA-1-
Should go into-
Should be wrapped into this other one. We like, we want to ame, rewrite the definition a little bit to make it a little more clear, but the rest of this we like, other than the weird stuff about neat and clean and that kind of stuff.
Okay. And if I can take a look at the global packet, I can make sure that wording-
Yeah, I have it.
Because we weren't doing that, I don't think, in, in 1994, to the degree we are now. Probably to add that in. Okay.
The other thing I meant to do and I forgot to do was on this one, the student travel regulations. There are a few websites that are mentioned here, but it looks like this policy was written in 2003, so we should check to see that those actually-
Sure.
Are still good links.
Yeah.
Yep.
16 years later, I'm guessing maybe those URLs have changed.
Oh, I'm sure they're archived somewhere.
Yeah, I took a quick look at the MASC website, I didn't see anything from them currently around field trips, but I'll, I'll look again in case I missed anything, but I can check those.
Okay.
Okay, so since we have a lot of budget conversation on the 13th, do you want this ready for the 13th as well?
No, it's fine.
Or it can be later? Okay, just so I can manage my time.
Yes. Let's focus on budget, all right?
Okay. Thank you.
Any further feedback on policies? Okay, next item is old business. We don't really have anything, but I did, there was one thing I did want to say, at my, at the last meeting, I had given an update on the Capitol Outlay Committee, and at that time, I think I didn't know when the next Capitol Outlay Meeting was, or I didn't have it with me, so I wanted to let the committee know that the Capitol Outlay Committee Meeting will be Thursday, March 21st at 6:00 PM. All right. New business, Dr. Thompson?
Yes, we have a proposed draft of the 2019-2020 calendar, and I was gonna ask Dr. Wyeth if he would just quickly go through the process for developing this calendar.
Yeah, so typically, what we do is, we discuss the present, the current calendar with our administrative team, and that includes department chairs, and ask the question, do we want to change it in any sort of significant way going forward? And I think, given everything that we're dealing with, we decided to keep the basic model that we have in place, in place for, for another year. The one thing that keeps coming up in a number of different forms is that our educators would like to have more time for common planning, and other school districts have early release days, maybe one day a month on a regular basis, actually, one day a week on a regular basis, or bi-weekly on a regular basis. So we, we, we have a very limited amount of time to do some of the professional things we'd like to do with this calendar, and it's been that way for quite a while. Basically, what's in our calendar are three full days and seven half-days. So we decided to keep that pattern going forward, and the other things we take into consideration are how do we distribute those professional development days, and how do we distribute those early release days? We, we try our best to take into consideration family needs, and so some of our, our PD time is, is put contiguous with, like, vacation times, but in other circumstances, that is not always beneficial to the school system. So another academic concern that comes up is, because parents have requested, why can't we have early release days on Wednesdays throughout the year? Just pick one day, make it simple. That sounds great, but that really impacts our special programs, our elementary specialists especially. If it's the same day every time, they lose instructional time. And so we decided, and we've done this for a number of years now, to make sure we distribute those early release days and even the professional development days across the week as much as possible. We tend to avoid Mondays, because Mondays tend to be holidays, and so we don't want to over, over, you know, overplay the Monday card. And Fridays sometimes can be problematic in terms of, you know, just attention and attendance. So I think we, what we try to do is get a balanced program. We've decided to put in a, one of our professional development days up in the fall, because we're hoping with our, some of our new programming, and hopefully with some of the override funding, if that comes to be, we will have time to train staff right out of the gate so that they can put those new practices in place for the remainder of the year. We have foundations coming up for grades one and two, so we, we're gonna take advantage of those professional development days in the fall for that, and hopefully some other things. And so you'll see the half-days are pretty much distributed every month as best we can. We, we obviously try to avoid too many days, professional days in December and November that tend to have large holiday chunks taken out of it. So our, our department chairs in particular are very careful about making sure we don't interrupt the academic pacing too much. You know, they really want to make sure they have a good chunk of time to sink into the work with kids without it constantly being chopped up and interrupted by vacations, holidays, and professional days. So it's a, it's a delicate balancing act, and I think that's what, what we've tried to strike here. And so this is the, the proposed calendar, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Laura?
I just have a question about, and this may be something that's contractual and I just have a question about, and this may be something that's contractual and, and we can't do anything about it, but just, this is less of a school question and more of a, like, I don't know, just thinking practically question. So, for December recess, we're having a half-day on Monday, the 23rd. I just wonder how much attendance you're really gonna get, if, you know what I mean? Like, people are gonna travel on that Friday. It just, it strikes me that having the idea that you have to come back for a half a day on that Monday, when you could travel to wherever you're going over the weekend or on that Friday, I just, I suspect you're gonna have very low attendance, and that seems like putting a, a bit of a strain on families and staff.
And, in terms of efficiency...
Yeah.
You know, if, if you could basically turn the heat down to 55 on December 20th, and just leave it down until January 1st, instead of, like, oh, let's heat up the building for three hours on Monday, and then shut it, you know, and then cool it down again.
Yeah, I, I think that we had a conversation around that, and I think it was, this is the Monday...
The 23rd.
The 23rd of December.
I believe the contract says that the last day before the December break has to be a half-day.
Yeah, it is in the contractual language, right.
Right.
So...
So, that half-day would be the Friday before.
Yeah, that seems to make more logical sense.
Or, you know, is there something that we could maybe consider saying, since it would've been a half-day on Monday, are you willing to do a, a full day on, on Friday, the 20th, and then, you know, have the 23rd off?
Well, it doesn't gain you a day, though, as long as it's a half-day, do you know what I mean?
No, I, I think you'd need another half-day somewhere, but I'm just saying that in terms of, um, like, if the reason, you know, if, if, I don't think the contract says we have to have school on the 23rd. I think the contract says that you're supposed to have a half-day that day immediately before December vacation, but I'm wondering if we might be willing to approach and say, is there any way that if we make the 23rd a day off entirely, could we make December 20th a full day?
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, we can ask.
Do we have to add a day somewhere, though?
Yeah, then we would have to add a day.
So, where, where were that going, end of the year?
That would go, probably to the, uh, so, setting the first 180 days being June 18th, would be June 19th.
Which is just making it from a Thursday to a Friday.
Yeah.
Right, but if you have a snow day, then it goes to Monday.
Yeah, but...
Yep.
Could we maybe do away with Columbus Day?
No, it's a state holiday, sorry.
Yeah.
So, if that's a, a strong feeling, we can certainly go back and talk to our, our colleagues and see if that's something that makes sense to them.
Yeah, I mean, I think having people come back on that Monday just doesn't seem to make any sense.
No, it really doesn't.
Okay, well, that seems to be a possibility, so we'll go to June 19th. Any other thoughts, so we can discuss that and come back next time with...
Michelle?
So, you had mentioned, um, a lot of the other towns have early release days, and we don't, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, yeah.
With the, all of the, um, new things that are, are coming forward in, in the training that's needed in the, the professional development, the teachers need to implement all of this, is there any way we could have early release?
You mean more early release days?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, the, the tension there is that you have to make sure you're not cutting into required instructional time.
Right.
So, um...
So, how do the other towns do it?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'd have to look at that, I mean, they may be kind of hedging the, the instructional time a little bit, or, or what, what did you say?
Or they have, or they have, or their day is longer, an extra 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Because I really think that the teachers need more of their own common planning time, and I think that they would love that.
And, and, and I think it's necessary with the new, with all the new incentives.
So, maybe if you looked at how the other surrounding communities do it, I don't know.
We wanted to kind of, hopefully, if we're in a good place next year, to do that, make that recommendation for next year, going forward, but we thought to do that now, with everything else going on, would be a little too stressful, disruptive, you know, with, there's just too much uncertainty right now, but...
Well, I don't think even if it passes or it doesn't, I still think it would be a welcome and helpful and useful and beneficial for our kids and our staff to have those early releases, if it's, if it's at all possible, because even in the elementary schools, they don't have enough common planning time. That would give them that.
I think it would take some renegotiations on all fronts, too, you know, once you talk about changing the school count, the school length of the school day in order to accommodate for that extra...
Well, I'm, I'm not proposing changing the length of the school day or anything, I don't know how it would be done, I just was wondering if there's any way that, because I, I really think that the teachers could very much benefit from more common planning time, without a doubt.
Yep, that's, they consistently ask for that, and the principals are trying to find time in the schedule to make that happen, and it is part of our strategic plan, you know, you'll see that loud and clear in the strategic plan.
So, because this calendar is, is, is this the way you did it this year? Was it one professional development a month?
An early release day, yeah, each month, pretty mu, yep. It pretty much follows the same model, the only thing we did differently from this year is we have, uh, two full days in the fall, and the other one we kinda had in, I think, November, well, that's the fall, but we just moved it up a little bit, November and then January, yeah.
So, I think with, with change comes change, and I, I think it would be a good idea to maybe explore the possibility of, of even having it for next year, I mean, I'd love to see that for the teachers.
Yeah, we need to, I mean, parents are asking for a calendar now. So, I think that's the tension, you know, they wanna make their vacation plans and everything else, and so, that's, but...
Do we vote on approving this, or just this is what it is?
We're gonna go back and we're gonna, um, talk with, with the, with the unions about the 23rd first, but, yeah.
I mean, I don't know what people's feelings are on, um, you know, it just seems to me, like, December 20th could be a full day of school, like, you know, but then, if, if the contract, if the, the reason for the, that in the contract is that there should be another half-day somewhere, I mean, it could be possible that we put another half-day, I, I, you know, like, maybe that Friday before Memorial Day weekend becomes a half-day, or something like that, you know? But I definitely agree with Maura that the idea of coming, you know, bringing the kids in for three hours on Monday, December 23rd, just seems...
Right.
Like, we're just going through the motions, nobody's really gonna learn a thing that day.
Most people aren't gonna come.
The only problem with, um, with, with the May date might be MCAS schedule will be with the, we're going to all...
And also, like, if the 20th is a half a day, as soon as you get to, like, the night, everyone's, like, showing a movie. I mean, there's good instruction, I'm not, I don't know who said that, they ran that one. But it still seems like it's worth not bringing them in on the 23rd.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, makes sense, I mean, we did talk about it, so I think, yep, that's worth looping back on, yep.
All right, um, next item on the agenda is two overnight field trip requests, Dr. Thompson?
Yes, the first one is the All-East Honor Ensemble Eastern Division Conference, which is in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, April 4th through the 7th. And that is, is in your packet, we have four, um, students who are selected to partake in that.
Is there a motion to approve this field trip? Thank you, Michelle, is there a second? Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion?
I'd like to congratulate the students who are, it's quite the honor to be, um, All Eastern Honors Festival, this is, you know, many states on the Eastern seaboard, so it's a significant honor.
Silly question, but the form says, please attach a statement regarding insurance coverage. Where is that statement of insurance coverage?
Yep, that was my question.
Am I missing it?
Yeah, it was gonna be my question, too.
I wanna beat you to punch this time.
Ah, look at you punching. Punchy. Yeah, it's, there, it is in here.
It, it is not there?
No.
Okay. So, motion approved pending, that form attached.
And I, I think, um, I would like to see these signed, you sign these before they come to us.
Right, but I, I signed them after you approved them.
Oh, after you, okay, that's how that works.
Right, you have to approve them before I, before I can sign them.
I got it, okay.
My understanding is that the insurance, I believe, is through the All-East Honor, but through...
That's quite possible, but it's not at all clear.
They usually are, but that should be attached, yes.
So, if I can amend my motion to approve pending, superintendent gets to a satisfaction, proof of insurance from whatever source is required.
Yep.
That sounds like a good motion, is someone like to second that amendment? Thank you, Maura, okay, so, um, all in favor of the amendment? Unanimous, okay, and so then, all in favor of approving the trip contingent on satisfactory demonstration to the superintendent of insurance? All in favor, unanimous, thank you, okay.
Share that with you folks, yep.
All right, um, and then, uh, middle school?
Yep, middle school out of state field trip to Washington DC? And that is May 29th through June 1st.
This says sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students? Is it a, a multi-grade thing?
Uh, yes, I believe this is the, um, not the eighth grade trip, but the, um, what's the other trip to Washington?
Search trip?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't think so, I thought we already approved the search trip.
We did.
Yeah.
They're go, I thought they were going to Williamsburg.
Yeah, yeah, they don't usually go to Washington DC.
No, it's always, it's the eighth grade trip that goes to Washington, or it had been.
I guess maybe they have broadened it?
I guess so.
Not that I'm sure.
I mean, this says...
Yeah, everything, throughout the whole packet, it says sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Right, except they are talking about eighth grade curriculum, right. Okay, this one has the certificate of insurance.
Yep.
And these names here, these are the chaperones?
Yeah. Yes.
Well, I'm curious who's actually going, but, um, it doesn't necessarily change my willingness to approve the trip. So, is there a motion to approve?
Uh, well, I just wanna comment that that's something we'll have to address in the policy, because I believe the original policy says it's required a list of students alphabetically, so...
Well, definitely, the administrators have to have that list of students, but I don't know that the school committee usually gets that list, because I think the point is, like, you know, somebody needs to have a list of who we've dragged out of the schools.
Of course, but it's just further evidence we need to revise that policy, so, I, just with that comment, motion to approve.
Is there a second? Thank you, Maura, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay, uh, Dr. Thompson, we have some donations.
We do, we have a donation from the, from the Student Council for Fall Session After School Sports, another, um, donation from the Student Council for $300 for Winter After School Sports Scholarships, the Prescott PTO, $1,322.40 of enrichment stipends for the after-school program, the Exxon Mobile Education Alliance, and, sorry, Nassar, $500 for the Prescott School. And then we have a donation from Big Y Supermarkets for $228.67 to the Norwood High School General Activities Council.
Excellent, is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Maura, seconded by Teresa.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Uh, sorry, uh, I'm just curious, the Coakley Middle School, the Student Council is for Winter Session After School Sports Scholarships and Fall Session After School Sports Scholarships? I'm just curious, how can we accept this if we don't know if we're having those programs next year?
This is...
The fall and winter would have passed?
This might be proactive, if you look, yeah, this is, this is from this past fall.
Oh, so this, this is to cover things that already happened?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the, the first, the first check was written in November, the end of November.
Okay.
Second one was the 24th of January.
So, that just raises a bit of a question, have these checks not been cashed and used? Has it just been sitting here since November?
I...
Shouldn't we have approved it when it came in?
I don't know what the...
Ms. Ellis? We can't deposit it until you sign off on it for the town.
Okay, so, November, it's almost March?
We haven't been sitting around on it.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting, but it's a reasonable question, right?
Yes, it's a reasonable question, it should've, it should've appeared a while ago.
Okay.
Oh, he sat in the...
Gotcha.
Not in the business office.
I'm, I'm, I'm not pointing any fingers, I'm just, you know...
Mrs. LeBlanc does not let money just hang out.
I'm, I'm sure.
I'm sure that observation has already been observed and addressed.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
All right, and, uh, second, why, Dave, all right, all in favor? Unanimous, all right. Personnel, Dr. Thompson, do we have anything?
Uh, not at this time, no.
Okay, um, school committee agenda, Dave, would you like to start?
Uh, no comments this time.
All right, Michelle?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, Teresa?
I also do not have anything tonight.
Okay, Maura?
Happy March. Oh, actually, no, I, I do wanna just also wish, uh, congratulations to all of our sports teams who are currently in tournament play. They have qualified for tournaments for the first time and employed some time. I believe we have four, four, I think, so I wanna congratulate all the students and wish them very, very hearty good luck in their play. They won?
My intel says they won.
So, the intel is they've won, congratulations.
The boys hockey team.
The boys hockey team have won.
They, they played last Monday.
Played last Monday, and they lost.
All right, um, I have nothing this evening either, so, um, let's have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Teresa, and seconded by Maura, all in favor? Unanimous, all right, committee, don't forget to sign warrants.